Hi there, can you hear me?
We can't hear you.
I, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. All right. Do we have Commissioner Ryan with us, either in person or virtually?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Well, if we're all assembled and present, I would like to call the March 15th, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting to order and begin by requesting that staff confirm that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much, we'll proceed with roll call, please.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner France.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you, would those who are pleased in attendance in room 107, would you please rise if you're able and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, we don't have any awards and proclamations today, which will bring us to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for any citizen to bring your questions or concerns to the City Commission. If you do choose to speak either in person or virtually, please give your name, where you're from, and limit your comments to five minutes.
Deborah Corrales, what I have given you today is a reminder of the genetic study presentation I gave some time ago. Pictures of seven dogs and an article labeled "What's in a Label." It's an article about Orange County Animal Services in Florida. In 2014, they took a different approach by removing breed descriptions from kennel cards and websites. The process, they processed nearly 8,000 dogs, stray dogs, per year, so they do not know the lineage of these dogs. What happened when they did this, the adoptions went up, hitting a three-month record high in 2014.
Ms. Corrales, could you pull the mic down a little bit, they're having a hard time hearing you online?
They mentioned the article about the genetic study saying that the Basingi Cocker Spaniel puppies today could be misidentified as lab pit bull type to Border Collie Beagle mixes, such a wide variety from two purebred dogs. It is time for Salina to catch up with the times. BSL is ineffective, visual identification is wrong up to 85% of the time, aggression is not breed selective, and you cannot determine it. Aggressive dogs, by the way, they look, only 1% of a dog's DNA determines what they look like. We should go to a Breed Neutral Dangerous Dog Ordinance, which is already on file with the city. And the pictures of these dogs are from the Wichita Animal Shelter. They too have taken off breed description because they can't tell what they are. So I asked the city to come forward and get with the times and update the ordinance that breed-specific legislation no longer rules in Salina, Kansas.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Corrales. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Dalton, City of Salina. Mayor.
McDowell.
Mayor Hodges, you have four commissioners here and why aren't, and you're, I assume you're here on Skype, but why aren't you here with your commissioners if they're doing it? What's the use of using Skype, there's four of them here already? I just think it's time that you stop with the legis, with yours, with the COVID-19 nonsense. It's on the back burner, it's still current, but it's way out there, our rates are low. I was told yesterday by a member of Salina Regional Health Center that they have less than 10 people, don't, I don't know the exa, I can't remember the exact number, but I think this is getting to the point, it is being, it is stupid.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Look, can you hear me?
Yes.
Tyler, Sartain, Salina, Kansas. Again, with the BSL, I know it's a topic to a lot of Salinans' hearts that can't be here today, so I'm going to be speaking on behalf of those that can't be here. Over the last few years, this body has been given probably quite a bit of resources that could fill a filing cabinet or two, on why we should repeal BSL. Unfortunately, all the work, scientific studies, and conversations that we have have only sparked that, conversations, and those are good, but we got to have a little action with that. So, we're asking that you please look at this BSL and repeal it. BSL is a false sense of security, it doesn't fully protect Salina's citizens. I mean, there are other dogs that can do damage and kill, even if they are smaller than the average pit bull, or, I mean, whatever type of dog, that's, that's the thing, they can do damage. I don't know if you heard the story recently, two German Shepherds were removed from the White House after they bit staffers, and those were the president's dogs. You would think that these dogs would be trained, because again, they are in the spotlight, which is great to have dogs in the White House, but, again, they're dogs, we don't know how they would react. If you're scared, you may act in aggression, if you don't know somebody, you're going to either fight or fly. So, again, BSL, it doesn't help Salina, it hurts it. So please, in this nonsensical and damaging law, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sartain, and if I could just speak to the breed-specific legislation really quickly here, I appreciate the passion that Ms. Corrales and Mr. Sartain bring, as well as their knowledge, but we did, as, as a governing body, address this issue, was that back in the fall of 2019? City Manager Mike Skreg can correct me if I'm wrong.
Can you? Um, I thi, I think that's correct, is around that timeframe.
Right, and, and the thing is, um, we, i, if we're going to revisit something like that, an issue like that, you know, that close to having already made a decision not to repeal it back in 2019, something that I've tried to make clear is that that is really something that's going to take a majority of the governing body to indicate that they want to do that, and I haven't gotten any message that the other members of the governing body want to return to that issue at this, at this point. So, I respect you guys for, you know, for sticking with this, but I just, you know, I, I just, I, I really don't know how to advise you to, to, to proceed, because, like I said, unless several other members of the governing body want to return to this, we've, we've addressed this within the recent past. So, just, you know, keep that in mind, as, as, as you continue to, to, to come speak to us.
Mayor Hodges, if it's helpful, another alternative is a petition process, and following the correct procedure with the correct number of signatures, it can actually be placed on a ballot for the community to vote on. That, that process is something my office is researching, and we're trying to put together kind of a summary handout, whether it's breed-specific legislation, legislation or any other topic, to be helpful to individuals that, you know, want to initiate a change in that way. So, I've yet to have an opportunity to speak with Ms. Corrales, but we are working on that and should have something that we could share in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Skreg, I think that would be so helpful for a whole range of issues, but specifically for breed-specific legislation, because I think we've kind of played out this, this play as, as, as far as we can, and I think going ahead and doing the, the petition process to get a repeal of BSL on the ballot is probably the best bet at this point. So, thank you, Mr. Skreg, for providing that information. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Rosemary Mye from Salina, Kansas, and I know Jason Tiller's going to speak today on the mandates coming up on the 21st. I feel that it's about time that we stop these mandates and get back to our normal way of life, after all, we've got illegals coming in by the thousands, and here we're stopping our community, keeping businesses from having capacity, hurting our own businesses when we've got hundreds and thousands of people coming in that care, could care less, whether they're bringing in COVID or what. And it's time that we get rid of these masks, get rid of these mandates, and go back to living like we should be living. And as far as the police still giving citations for mask wearers or unmask wearers, I think that is totally ridiculous, they have other things to be devoting their time with.
Thank you.
Norman Annes, Salina, Kansas. Citizen participation is the cornerstone of democracy, that's on your own city paper. So do we have a democracy or a dictatorship here? A dictatorship is a small group of people who are led by a leader who forced their views on the people. We don't have a democracy in this kind, in this country. We've got dictatorship, maybe a republic. A republic is a small group of people who are to administer, not dictate, not set policy, make policy, but who are to administer the laws that we, the people, voted to be governed by. So, I address this commission. Are you a dictatorship?
Thank you, Mr. Manal, it's good to see you again. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
That looks like it's it for the room, Mayor Hodges, and I, and there's nobody from the public online, so we should be good to move forward.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Wood. We don't have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, which brings us to our consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 8th, 2021.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented, or is there, would someone like to discuss this?
Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of March 8th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 8th, 2021, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye.
That motion passes 5-0, which brings us to administration, item 7.1.
Item 7.1, Health Department Update.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Mayor. Public.
All right, well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Tiller for being present at the City Commission meeting today, this was at my request, that we received an update for him, and I just want to thank him for all of his hard work, I know he spends a lot of time on the circuit, so to speak, trying to get good reliable information out there for all Salinans, and I thought it would be a good opportunity for him to share his information in a different venue. And with that, I will turn it over either to Mr. Skreg or Mr. Tiller for any further introduction.
I don't have a whole lot, I'll quickly turn it over to Mr. Tiller. As part of the staff report, it tried to provide you a little bit of background, acknowledging that there's currently a health order in effect through Sunday at 11:59. I did attach to the staff report the copy of that health order, which is a mass gathering limitation, as well as occupancy limitations, also provided you a copy of the city's face mask order and the county's face mask order, and then lastly, a VaxFAX, which is a regular communication that the Health Department puts out, that spoke a little bit to the target goal of vaccination levels, and I think Mr. Tiller's prepared to speak to that in greater detail. I do have weekly update information if that's of interest, at any point, just let me know, but I have that information if you'd like. With that, Mr. Tiller and I have spoken to give him a sense of kind of what we're inviting him to do, and, and what questions you might have, and I'll be happy to turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mike. And speaking of that update, I'm just going to go ahead and cover our numbers real quick for the commission as far as where we are. Total cases, 6,017, recovered, 5,745, which is always good, active cases right now being followed, 165, deaths remain at 107, and hospital currently has three COVID patients. To put a little perspective on that, the two-week number that I usually put together for the county commission reflects the difference between the number of cases we had during the last update till this point, which I am happy to say is only 66 new cases in the last two weeks. You know, there was a time about a month and a half, two months ago, where 66 might be a single daily, you know, rate of cases, so we have made a significant amount of progress. Because of that, and because of the continued increase in vaccinations, which at this point, and I'll get to the orders in just a minute, but I want to speak a minute too on vaccinations, that by the end of this week, we expect to have 11,000 people who live and work in Saline County vaccinated. The rate, I believe, of vaccinations are probably going to start ramping up very quickly in the next few weeks. One additional announcement that the governor is, has already probably put out at her four o'clock special announcement today, or will vary shortly, is that on March 22nd, the state of Kansas will be moving to phases three and four, which means that we will be able to start vaccinating more people at a much faster rate, and be able to get back toward, or at least closer in that direction toward normal that everybody is looking for. With the decrease in cases, the decrease in hospitalizations, the decrease in deaths, and the significant increase in our vaccination rate, I am pleased to say that with those indicators, that I intend to let the Public Health Mass Gathering Order expire on March 21st at 11:59, which will then allow gatherings to continue to take place. We do urge that people continue to, while we're still getting everyone vaccinated, to exercise caution, social gathering, especially with people they don't know, and continue to wear the mask. Which then brings me to the mask update, which of course is the city's and thus for the, the county's ordinances respectively. I think that to remove those mask mandates at this time, especially if we're going to let the mass gathering order expire, is a bit premature. We have looked at some indicators to try and be able to make a safe transition, and again, these are just recommendations, but one of those is that we target or try to get to 70% of the adult population in Saline County vaccinated. And with the increase in vaccination and being able to hit those phase three and four folks, I think we'll be able to get there much sooner. Additionally, I think it would be also helpful that we are seeing, or that we need to see days without cases. Even though our numbers are much lower, which is very, very good, we are still seeing cases daily. And then, I think that would put us in a much better position if the city, and therefore the county as well, were to remove or reduce any type of mask order. Again, that is only my recommendation when it comes to the mask order. At this time, barring that, are there particular questions that I can try and answer while I am here? Yes, sir?
Yep. Just for those, Commissioner Davis, so your order, if I'm understanding, wouldn't necessarily be an order, you would just let the mass gathering limitations expire?
Correct, we wouldn't need to do a, a rescinding of it or anything like that, it's already set, has an expiration date of 11:59 PM on the 21st, and then we would just let that expire.
Okay, and what does that do for social distancing?
So, the order itself in particular has stipulations in there for social distancing. Then what would happen is that social distancing would become a recommendation, but not necessarily a requirement in those venues.
Guess that's where I have my problem, this is serious enough that I think people need absolute direction, and it needs to be uniform. You know, and I have not heard any doomsday predictions for folks traveling, coming out of spring break, but it's probably about the, the worst week of the year to, in my opinion, to get too callous and get too smug.
And we, oh, excuse me, sorry.
And I would much rather see clear-cut directions for businesses and other, you know, institutions on the, on the social distancing. Now, I know folks are tired of wearing the mask, but that normal you used to know, it ain't coming back anytime soon. And you're sitting here, a lot of people were sitting here like, like you, six months ago, feeling fine, and they're in the grave right now. And, you know, the ozone layer was going away, it's gotten better, but we haven't stopped, you know, prohibiting, you know, the fluorocarbons that, that depleted, just because we're getting better doesn't mean we're past the gate and this is over. And I just, I think we've seen what happens when you leave things up to people's wherewithal to make their own decision. Biggest example being the state of Texas. So I'd just like a little more direction in the, in the form of social distancing. That was it.
Okay, sir.
Mr. Tiller, I would like to, first of all, I'm, I'm gonna pat you on the back a little bit, I was fortunate enough to get in on the first round of vaccinations for, and it was, you know, six weeks ago or something like that, and I was, I must say, I was impressed with the way your staff and the medical staff handled themselves, you did a very good job of processing people and getting us in and out, and then when I went back for the second shot, it was even better. I think it took us about 30 minutes total, all waiting time, including the waiting time to get out, so I was very impressed with the way your people handled that, obviously that took some thought and some organizational skills, and I do appreciate that very much. You know, I, you mentioned a two-week number, and on about July 8th, when we implemented the mask mandate, that number was, stood at about 118, got as low as 47 in August, and then it started moving back up. And as of last Friday, I had it at 74, you've got it today at 66, that's good. So I, you know, if you look at the active cases, July 8th, there were 173, as of Friday, they were 185, now you say 165, you know, and, and in my view, that active case number is what reflects kind of the reservoir of the virus in the community that, that is communicable, that is, it has a, it's a, kind of a risk factor assessment. So I, I think we're, we're making progress, we may be getting close, but I'm not quite ready yet to pull the trigger on going from a mandate to an advisory for the masking, I think we need to see where this thing goes. If you look at the daily rates, they dropped very dramatically until about February 17th, and then there's a decided flattening in that, in that drop. So we may be, if it stays flat, that's wonderful, if it continues to decline slightly, that's good, but we may just be in a valley and there may be another hill of, of peak coming, we don't know exactly what drives this thing in total. So I, I'm unwilling, along with Dr. Davis, to, to go so far as to repeal a mask mandate at this point, mass gathering order I have less concern with, but I think it's something we definitely need to keep an eye on and be ready to pull that trigger and move from a mandate to an advisory, you know, hopefully in the not-too-distant future.
And I agree with that, sir.
Couple of questions, and this one may be, uh, to the city manager, with the mass gathering expiring on May 21st, how does that affect the conversation we just had about the water park?
Significantly, I think that becomes more of a policy decision for us, and what our level of comfort is, but in conjunction with, you know, what's in place, we could go back to full capacity. The, the social distancing being recommended while not required, whether that's the Kenwood Cove, or the Fieldhouse, or Tony's Pizza Event Center, becomes an administrative question we'll have to address, but we would be back to full capacity if we so chose.
I think that's something we need to discuss as a group then, if we're talking about the, the mass gatherings, and also how, if, if we're going to have any kind of social distancing requirements. A couple of questions, I know that you had talked about looking to, to maybe do away with the mask mandate when we reach 70% vaccination in the community. Are we able to track the number of individuals that are actually getting vaccinated outside the county? I know there's numerous people that have gone outside the county. Right, but on the same token, we've also had numerous people who work here that live outside of the county who have gotten vaccinated. So as of this moment, we are tracking the total vaccinations we are giving. The state system that would, that this information is reporting into is not user-friendly at getting that information back out of, for us, as a usable level of information at this point. They've rolled out something new on their dashboard, but I don't have full confidence yet in, in that information, and what that information actually means as a rate of vaccination that they have put on there. So yes, we are tracking, and also knowing that that trade-off, if somebody goes to another county, we've likely got somebody that, that works here that we have vaccinated overall. When, when you talk about vaccinating the adult community, what ages are you looking at? Right, so the Pfizer vaccine is for 16 and older, Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson both are for 18 and over, and when we're talking about the adult community, we're talking about those 18 and over, primarily too, because the majority of what we have gotten has been Moderna and the Johnson &amp; Johnson, and so also looking at the census numbers too, is how we kind of started off with approximate number of people in the county that were over the age of 18, and then working with that number, plus the number that we have vaccinated, to look at the percentage of adults that we have vaccinated in the county. I, I guess, and I'm, this is just my opinion, but I, I really don't think we will reach the 70% as a community, if you. Well, again, it's a target for us to reach to, there's also a point that I think that we may come to where we have satisfied the demand, and that will be another conversation of, if everybody that wants to get vaccinated has gotten vaccinated, and we may not be at 70%, then we also have that conversation then too. Right. But 70% is a target for us to work towards, not a concrete number that we absolutely have to get. That's kind of the answer I was hoping to hear, so, okay, thank you.
One other question, you probably read the article in the paper this morning about the racial and ethnic disparities and the percentages of people being vaccinated, is the data that Saline County updates include ethnic background?
It does. When we are registering individuals, and then also. When we are registering individuals and then also on the consent form, it has that information on there. And so we are also, all of that information is inputted into Web I Z when we give the vaccinations. Unfortunately, again, it's not easy for us to pull back out at the county level. But we are also, part of our planning and our team also includes folks from Salina families, Salina Regional. And so as we are looking at those types of issues, those disparity issues, those who have not, who may not be getting the message about how to register for vaccine, and then how do we try to overcome those so that we can get vaccine to everybody in the county?
Do we have any census tracts, any other geographical markers which identify areas that would appear to be underrepresented in those getting the vaccines?
We originally were trying to look at census tracts, but we haven't really spent much time on the census tracts. Some of that, I feel, has to do with the way the state rolled out the individual phases of who was to be in each phase, for instance. And so that has been probably more of our driving initially about scheduling people to get them vaccinated. I do not remember if it was by census tract or by zip code, it trying to look at one set of data, but I think it, for the most part, encompassed the city of Salina. So it didn't really give us much division of where a greater need might be. Now, those conversations, we know that geographically there are other places in the city and in the county that we need to try and get to. And I think that as we get more vaccine, being able to have other clinics in different places besides just at the J.C. Penney Building will be something that we'll be able to accomplish down the road.
All right, so there's no way to, or I shouldn't say no. Is there a way to track the numbers of people being vaccinated by the estimates of people living in certain areas? I mean, they're elderly and people probably spread all around town, but any other breakdowns, you start?
I don't know off the top of my head how deep we can get into it. Much of the information too, that we currently have, say from the registry, once we started that, there was also a significant amount of healthcare workers and nursing home and nursing home workers that were all vaccinated prior to us developing this registry and being able to collect some of that information. And with the federal vaccination program and long-term care that was also going on in the beginning of December, much of that information about how many were vaccinated only came from us making those phone calls. That wasn't reported to locals because it was a federal program.
Okay, so let's say two months down the road, how would you determine if certain neighborhoods were vastly under-vaccinated by your best estimates of the population and by the people who showed up?
That's a good question, sir. We're still working on how to be able to identify that and follow up on that. And I'm sorry that I don't have a great answer on that right now.
Well, I plan to see it, or maybe you've already thought of it, obviously, that's good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I had one more question, and again, there's so many things that float around out there. Does the CDC, did they come out with the recommendation that if there's individuals that have both had two shots, that masks are not required? So what the CDC and consequently the K D H E came out with is that if there are individuals who have been fully vaccinated, and fully vaccinated means that for Pfizer, Moderna, they've had both shots, and it has been two weeks since their second shot, or two weeks from the one shot of Johnson &amp; Johnson, that then they are considered fully vaccinated, they can gather in a private home or small group without masking or social distancing. Furthermore, if it is, say for instance, you, sir, you've got both of your shots, you were going to visit your grandmother who hadn't had hers yet, you could still be able to visit them using some still minor precautions, but because you've been fully vaccinated, that removes some of that. I would still caution though, that when you're in public, and the guidance goes so far to say too, that when you're in public, you still need to, of course, follow what the local guidance is and also that you need to mask in public because we're just not to the rate yet where we have enough people vaccinated. Thank you.
If I might follow up, you'd said 70% is kind of your target. I presume that's based on the World Health Organization position that that is the level at which herd immunity is conferred?
So in general, 70, 80% is considered herd immunity of a population. For COVID, they don't really know exactly what that percentage is. So we are, you know, we couldn't really say that, well, we're just gonna go till we get to some percent. So we use that, which is a known number, as a target to work towards for the adult population, which we feel is more attainable and based off of the number of kids that were, that had COVID and the less likelihood of children to be able to transmit it. We felt like that that was a good target number to work towards.
Okay, and that was my point, is that it is not a COVID number, it's other viral transmission, which may or may not be the same.
Right.
Might be less, might be more with COVID.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
It just gives us a metric to work toward.
Thank you.
I have a question, maybe more for Mr. Schrag, but let me say, Mr. Tiller, that considering where this began and how you had to ramp up completely from the beginning, I think you've handled it very judiciously and very sensibly. So I appreciate all the work and that you've done and with all the partnerships that you've had to manage, both above you and with the different organizations in the community.
Thank you.
Just because I don't know, Mr. Schrag, I was gonna ask, is it, it's my understanding the schools will go back full class, full classroom after spring break, is that right?
April 1st is my understanding, yes.
And so they'll still be wearing masks, but they'll attempt social distancing, or is that still...
Well, so, yeah.
Jason may know the answer.
So I think that we have, in working with our school districts, I think that we have done a phenomenal job in trying to minimize and with the school nurses be able to quickly identify when somebody was positive and who might have been exposed, and making sure that they were quarantined. Because we've had very, very low, and I'm sorry, I don't have that specific number in front of me, but very low transmission amongst kids who may have been exposed at school. And because of that, school, other than when 305 was doing hybrid in their middle and high school, all the schools have been in session this entire school year. And we have not had to close any of the schools at any time during this school year, which is, I think, a phenomenal step and a nod to them with their attention to detail and their dedication to making sure that things were done right and safely. And the fact that they have continued to do that is also one of the mitigating factors of being able to, you know, come back to full-time with everybody in school, middle school and high school and 305, you know, on the 1st of April. So they've been phenomenal partners to work with, and I think that that is really important that we, that we recognize, and you mentioned the partnerships, and, you know, I just want to give a shout-out to the city and to everybody else, but partnerships in this county throughout this have been phenomenal to work with. We've been able to have meaningful discourse and talk about things without it being a blaming or a unprofessional, you know, conduct amongst partners. So I am very appreciative of the partnership we've been able to have with the city through this as well. Thank you.
And any other commissioners have questions or comments? I have, I have just a few myself, and just to follow up mostly on questions that have already been asked. So how many, what does the number of 70% of adults 18 and over in Salina or Saline County, what does that number actually look like? You may have referred to it, and I may have missed it.
No, I didn't say that number specifically, but it's about, I believe, 28,000 to 29,000 adults.
Okay. And how many vaccines generally, and I know it varies, but how many vaccines from all sources are generally available each week when you take into account the county health department, private sources like Dylan's or B&amp;K? Do we have any sense on the total number of vaccines that are available for our use every week?
So our estimate would be, on an average, probably nine through 12, maybe about 1,200, between 900 and 1,200 on a given week.
Okay, okay. But we are able to track the private vaccinations, so to speak? I mean, like, say, like a pharmacy or a grocery store will say, you know, we vaccinated 100 people this week, or, but there's some global accounting for the different sources of vaccines?
Yes and no. When it comes down to the pharmacies, because again, it's like the federal program for the long-term care facilities, the pharmacies, it's also a federal program for pharmacies, so that's coming directly from the feds to the pharmacies. They in turn have to put that information into the state's Web I Z system in order to track the vaccines that they have given. However, when that was, that whole process was developed, it wasn't developed with communication with the locals in mind. So we have talked with the regional Dylan's rep, for instance, in trying to figure out how we can get some sort of reporting to get a better idea of how many they're giving. And there are still some hoops, I think, that have to be jumped through or figured out for that one. You would think it would be as simple as them telling us, hey, we gave 200 this week. But I think that there's just some, either some logistical or issues in there, I'm not exactly sure. But they weren't really forthcoming at first about saying it would be that easy to do.
Gotcha. And then, I think it was Commissioner Hoppeck had alluded to this earlier, you know, and then, you know, if, say, Dylan's did give 100 vaccinations in a week, how many of those were Saline County residents versus, you know, McPherson County or, you know, Dickinson County or whatever? And you said that, you indicated that was pretty difficult even to track the vaccinations that had been given through the health department. It was pretty hard to get that information backed out of like the state system, I think?
Correct.
Okay.
So one other thing on the pharmacy vaccinations in response to that too, is that the state of Kansas only has a residency requirement for those who live in Kansas. Each county can either make or not make a county residence requirement. And we chose to, especially early on when vaccine amounts were very sparse, to focus on those who lived and worked, especially because those who work here generally will spend 40 hours or more working and then not counting any other time that they spend here shopping, you know, eating, that kind of stuff in the community. The pharmacies, especially the chain pharmacies, don't have that requirement. Their only requirement was to follow the state's phase guidelines, but not any type of residency. So theoretically, anybody for the pharmacy could come from, you know, as far as Ellis or Wilson County to Dylan's here in town, or, you know, vice versa, so. But again, I think going back to the overall goal of just getting as many people vaccinated until we either meet the demand or at the rate of production that's starting to ramp up, I don't think we'll run out again, but we definitely want to be able to meet the demand.
Absolutely, and that was good, that perfect lead-in to my next question was, what is the biggest barrier in terms of being able to vaccinate more citizens every week? Is it just the vaccination supply? Do we reach a certain threshold with, you know, the number of vaccines that we can give each week or each day in terms of our staffing?
Well, it is, overall, it's the supply of how much we get from the state. And that dictates how many vaccines that we're able to do in a given week. And theoretically, well, not theoretically, but even a few weeks ago, initially, they were telling us we might get 500 doses a week. And then that has, over the last several weeks, ramped up significantly. But it's still, we have more people on the registry than we have vaccine for, even as we move, you know, through, I think we're ready to do 1,100 this week. So the supply in and of itself still continues to be the major limiting factor.
Gotcha, so if, if hopefully the supply continues to open up, we'll be able to accommodate that with our infrastructure and be able to ramp up accordingly to accommodate more vaccination appointments?
Yes.
Okay, cool. And then, let's see, sorry, I was making, I was making notes while other people were speaking here. So I think that's, I think that's about all that I have. So we're looking at getting close to 29,000. Our goal is to get about 29,000 citizens vaccinated. We've vaccinated 11,000 so far, and do you have the...
By the end of this week, we'll have 11,000.
By the end of the week, you'll have 11,000. How many more people remain on the registry?
I think maybe under 1,000 for Phase 2. We have some on there that have already registered for Phase 3. We had put out in our Vax Facts on Thursday for those that qualified for Phase 3 to start registering. And now, given the governor's announcement that next Monday, we will, the state will move to Phase 3 and Phase 4, I'm assuming that that number's probably going to go up significant in the next few days of people registering. So they'll have a better idea of what we're looking at in the next few weeks as far as how many people are wanting, first of all, demand, and how long that may take to get them vaccinated.
Gotcha. And just for folks who may be hearing some of this information for the first time or have forgotten about it, people can register at vaccinateSalineCountyKansas, and that's KS.com.
Correct.
And they can also sign up for news releases on the county's website at saline.org/coronavirus, and that way they'll be in the loop. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, you have vaccination updates, your Vax Facts, and then on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you have the most recent data for COVID statistics.
And if they like to listen to the radio, our media specialist has me doing KSAL on Monday, or, excuse me, first, third, and fourth Thursdays at 8:15, and KINA every Saturday, every other Saturday at 9:00 AM. So they prefer to hear it that way, and they can find, you know, information on one of those. She keeps moving.
Gotcha. And thanks, thanks for doing all of that outreach. If there's one thing that you would want us to know in terms of feedback that you've gotten from community members about the barriers to getting vaccinated, is there any specific resistance that we can address through education or different kinds of vaccination opportunities?
I think at this point, being on the spot, really just to help amplify the messages that we're getting out there to be able to reach as many as possible. You know, a few times we have done some print ads and, or we have a Spanish language, so for the Vax Facts, if somebody needs that one. But that would probably be one of the biggest things right now, is just helping us get the message to everybody through as many means as possible.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Tiller. That's all I have. Is there anything else from the commission or staff? And I can open, we can open that up to any kind of public question or comment?
I just have one last question. I just heard this from a, a lot of my patients are over 65. But she said that she had put, placed herself on the registry but had not heard yet. And you said you thought you were down to 1,100 left in Phase 2. If she has not heard, is that usually just because she's, her number is still higher than the number of vaccines? Or should she call to make sure that she's still on the list?
So a couple of things there. One of the things is that on day one, when we opened the registry, we had 6,000 over 65 folks that signed up. And when we started dividing up some of our vaccine allotments to do like law enforcement and other Phase 2 groups like that, it took us a little bit longer to get through that whole list. That being said, if someone is still wondering or they still haven't gotten contacted, Salina Family Healthcare is one of our partners, has been managing that list for us. um Salina Family Healthcare is one of our partners, has been managing that list for us. And so if they reach out to Salina Family Healthcare to uh check on their status on the list, um they are happy to be able to double-check that, make sure that they are registered. And then they may even be able to give them, they can't tell them specifically that you're going to get a call in two or three days, but they may be able to at least um help with that timeframe that it may be this week or next week.
All right. Thank you.
Um, all right. Uh if there are any members of the public that have a specific question for either Mr. Tiller or the commission or staff, um I'd invite you to come forward, give your name, where you're from. However, one disclaimer here. If you want to communicate um your opinion on mass gatherings, masks, pros and cons, a general, more general message like that, I'd ask you that you reach out to us through um another means, either by email or during Citizens Forum next week. I'd like to keep this focused on um specific information that Mr. Tiller can provide to get out, to make sure that um accurate information is ge- is getting disseminated. Is there anyone who would like to to that has questions or would like to speak to that?
We don't see any in the room. Mayor Hodges.
All right. Thank you very much, Jacob. And thank you, Mr. Tiller, for making yourself available today. And um thank you to Salina Regional Health Center, Salina Family Healthcare, um U S D three oh five city staff and all who have come together to um to address COVID in in the community. Thank you. All right. That brings us to item seven point two.
Item seven point two, consider awarding the bid for project number two-one-zero-two-one to resurface the flooring and walls of the Lazy River at Kenwood Cove Aquatic.
And do we have Mr. Cotton or Mr. Hammond available?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hodges Hodges and members of the commission. Chris Cotton, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm coming before you today for your consideration to replace the finished concrete coating on a portion of the Lazy River walls and floors at Kenwood Cove. Last fall, we did a full inspection, tested the pumps and motors of the facility. We identified that the finished concrete surface of the Lazy River needed to be addressed before the twenty-twenty-one opening due to excessive spider cracking and delamination that you can see in the photos in your packet. The most likely cause of the spider cracks and delamination is the heavy use the river receives through the summer and the freeze-thaw cycle through the winter. The total square footage that needs to be replaced is twelve thousand five hundred square feet. You can see the overview of the profo- proposed affected area from the graphic in your packet. The area represents over one-third of the total wall and floor finished concrete of the entire facility. The current finished concrete surface is called Diamond Bright, which was installed in two thousand and ten when Kenwood Cove opened. Diamond Bright is a Portland cement with quartz aggregate mixed mixed in. Diamond Bright has a very good reputation within the commercial pool industry. It is a very popular way to finish a pool surface. It is durable, easily maintained, and an affordable choice to to finish our pool wall and floor surface. It has a textured surface consisting of small pebbles in the cement being brought to the surface. The life expectancy on average is approximately eight to twelve years. This will be the eleventh year of operation for Kenwood Cove. When researching for companies within the region that would be available to do this work, staff reached out to Sunflower Pools, Pools Plus, Westport Pools, Coat Your Pool, and Mid-America Pool Renovation. The request for proposals was advertised on January seventeenth of twenty-twenty-one. As you can see from the blue sheet, we only received one bid for Mid-America Pool Renovation located in Grandview, Missouri. The amount is for one hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. The bid came back higher than budgeted by six thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars due to uh due to additional square footage the contractor identified as necessary after walking the area. Additionally, they would include a tiled caulk joint in the Lazy River area that goes through the wave pool to assist in preventing future hairline cracks. They felt these items necessary to ensure they could stand behind the five-year warranty. Speaking with Westport Pools recently, that company stated their calendar for spring has been filled since October of twenty-twenty. They further stated that many of the smaller companies that do pool resurfacing work went out of business in the past year. Coat Your Pool does not provide concrete finished products. They provide fiberglass resin finishes. And speaking to the owner of Sunflower Pools, they no longer had employees to provide such work. The Kenwood Cove Maintenance Fund balance as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty was one hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which would adequately cover the amount of the bid. If the project is approved to move forward, there would be a remaining fund balance of forty thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Additionally, we'd have the twenty-twenty-one funds for maintenance of Kenwood Cove for necessary repairs to buildings and equipment staff uh and equipment. Staff has identified the following options for city commission's consideration. We would uh ask you to approve a motion awarding the pro- the the bid for project number twenty-one oh twenty-one to Mid-America Pool Renovation in the amount of one hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and authorizing the city manager to exec- con- execute a contract with Mid-America Pool Renovation upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents. Staff will stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
So there is no contingency on a on a project like this?
Um, that is their, well, that's their their amount they'll do it for, and that's that's the price we'll hold them to.
Uh and kind of an ancillary question, this um, you know, we've been setting aside, it says there are sixty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty per year for some time. That was based on a calculation, an estimate that was done, I don't know, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. I don't remember exactly when uh by the the uh Parks and Rec Department. Um, has that number been revisited in light of our experience? And the reason I ask the question is we, you say we're going to be resurfacing about a third of the area after eleven years and the the anticipated life is ten to twelve years. That sounds to me very much like the remaining two-thirds are going to have to be done relatively quickly. And that will obviously deplete that set-aside fund. So I'm I'm just asking a question if if maybe we shouldn't proceed to try to update that um set-aside calculation, given our experience to date.
Um we can absolutely look at that. However, um I'd also want to say that we have inspected the rest of the Diamond Bright surface and at this time it is in good condition.
Okay.
The the can the the uh area that needs to be replaced is the most frequent in the area. It has uh what I would consider to be a massive amount of foot traffic on it every day that that we're open. And so I would say due to the wear pattern, um that's just one of the reasons that area is is finally needing attention. But I want I want to um let you know that staff does an exceptionally well job of maintenance on that facility. And um I couldn't be more pleased with Jeff and and his efforts to to maintain Kenwood Cove.
And and I'm not being critical of that. I'm I'm just saying that we've now got ten years of experience with operation. Maybe that set-aside number should be revisited as maybe as a part of our next C I P process uh and updated to maybe something that is um more up to date, I guess.
Yes, sir. Commissioner France, your point's not lost. It seems like everything in, as it relates to the water park, is a big-ticket item. And so we sweat that fund balance and what our maintenance might be going forward. Um and in the event that we have something that comes up that exceeds the fund balance, we'll be forced to find an alternate way to pay for it. If we can, if we can alter that number and set aside a little bit more, that certainly would help us be prepared.
Is there, is there anyone? I had the same concern as Commissioner France. That was the only thing I had written down for this. Is there anyone else that has a question? If not, um we'll open it up for public comment if there's any member of the public that has a question about the project or a comment.
I see none in the room, Mayor Hodges.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
This mayor or Commissioner Hoppe, I move that we approve a motion awarding the bid for project number two-one-zero-two-one to Mid-America Pool Renovation, Inc. in the amount of one hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Mid-America Pool Renovation, Inc. upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Commissioner Davis, second.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid for project number two-one-zero-two-one uh to resurface the flooring and the walls of the Lazy River at Kenwood Park to Mid-America Pool Renovation Incorporated. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppe.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. Thank you. That motion passes five zero, which brings us to item seven point three, A, B, and C in our newly numbered agenda.
Item seven point three, general obligation bonds and temporary notes. Item seven point three, A, resolution number two-one dash seven-nine-four-one, authorizing the offering for public sale of general obligation temporary notes and bonds. Item seven point three, B, first reading of ordinance number two-one dash one-one-zero-five-five, authorizing the issuance and delivery of approximately eight million one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bonds. Item seven point three, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Stifel Nichols and Company Incorporated to provide financial advisor services for the city of Salina for the issuance of the twenty-twenty-one general obligation temporary notes and bonds.
Thank you. Ms. Pat?
Good afternoon, Debbie Pat, Director of Finance and Administration. Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. Um this item is part of our annual issuance of debt financing for the city of Salina. Uh there's two items involved here with the actual debt financing itself. That's res- the resolution twenty-one seventy-nine forty-one, which basically authorizes us to go out for public sale for our notes and bonds. It also provides us for the authorization to provide the documentation that's required for those boat notes and bonds, especially the official statement, which describes kind of what we're selling and who we are, so that investors can make a a good decision based on that information. The second um part of this, the financing is for the bonds. In order to issue bonds, the city must issue an ordinance. So ordinance twenty-one dash eleven oh fifty-five to be considered today on first reading would authorize the issuance and delivery of the general obligation bonds. The second reading of that um ordinance is scheduled for April twelfth, which is the day that we'll accept bids and we'll also bring that those bid results forward to you on that day. Uh the temporary notes are being issued as temporary partial financing for the Ninth Street Bridge, the river renewal fin- uh final design, automation automated sanitation tracks, and the uh H V A C at T-Pac. The bonds are being issued as permanent financing for the basketball floors at T-Pac, the police training facility, and three special assessment districts at Stone Lake Two, Pheasant Ridge Three Phase Two and Nine South. I I provided a lot of information to you um just as background, but I'm not going to go through that information unless you have specific questions. The final piece of this action item is um a financial advisory services agreement. Per the municipal securities rulemaking board, financial advisors are now required to have an agreement with the um municipalities that they are serving for each of the issuances that they have. Uh Stifel Nicholas, who was previously George K. Baum, has been providing financial services to the city for many, many years under Roger Edgar and Dave Artterberry. Roger um recently retired when when Stifel Nicholas took over in twenty nineteen. So we still, we still have Dave Artterberry as our main financial advisor. And I believe he's on the phone if we have any questions for him. The 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 agreement that we'll sign with him basically states what their fees are going to be and what the services are that they're going to provide, which are, include analysis of the issuance. They issue the official statement. They coordinate with um Moody's and any of those rating companies. They provide calendars. They do a lot of, they do a lot of work on the issuance for us. I did provide a draft, and like I said, Mr. Artterberry is on the phone if you have any questions in regards to that. Um as far as the fiscal note for this, in twenty twenty, the effect on property taxes is about four hundred and fifteen, four hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, and special assessments is one hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. There are three act- separate action items. We've provided um four options for each item. You may approve the item, approve the item with amendments as used deem appropriate, postpone consideration of each item, or vote to deny the item. And staff is recommending option one for all three of those items. As I mentioned, I do have um Dave Artterberry on the phone, and I believe also we have members from Gilmore and Bell who are a bond counsel on the phone, if you'd have any questions for them. I'd stand for questions.
Any questions from the commission? I guess I've I've got one in terms of um our future debt payment estimates. And I know we we talked about this in the past about how we have a pretty high um debt payment amount in twenty-twenty-three and to a lesser degree in twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five. Is, are we pretty much maxed out on our capacity for debt payments in twenty-twenty-three?
Uh no, um the number that I provided you for the debt finance payments were the, was the number that three point three million dollars was the number that we estimated would need to come from property tax. Um there are some other taxes that are included in those payments that we only estimate. So if we have transient guest tax, motor vehicle tax, delinquent property tax, and other tax, and transient guest tax, um because we don't know what those numbers are going to be, they're estimates at this point, that number could go up or down um depending on what that number does. And what we do is, as we get through, go through the budget process in the fall, uh we look at what the property valuation is for that particular year and determine what the necessity is for that number. And as we get closer to that twenty-twenty-three date, we'll have a better idea of what those numbers are going to look like.
He might also.
Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think so. I was just looking at um, and please understand, even though I've been doing this for a few years, I still don't have the slightest idea about municipal finance. I was just looking at page three when um, you know, where you have the table with the total debt payments. And when we get up there to like fourteen-two in twenty-twenty-three and then thirteen-eight and thirteen-four in twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, those the those numbers just, they they caught my eye.
Yeah. And I will say too that um, I lost my train of thought. Go ahead.
Well, I I was just going to add, another variable is uh the debt service fund balance and uh what balance there may be and what availability there may be to apply some of that to uh some of those years of uh debt service where it's getting higher.
I've thought about what I was going to say now. Um I think your question goes back to what is our legal debt margin? Um what is that percentage that we look at each year? Um off the top of my head, and I don't remember as well these days as I used to, I want to say we're in the forty percent range of that number. Um we do calculate that each year as we do the annual audit um to make sure that that number is at a reasonable amount. Um so I I believe last year's number was in the forty percent range. So when you ask about our capacity, our capacity, we're about sixty percent or so lower than what our capacity would be.
Great. So so as long as we can make our payments, I'm happy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, are there any other questions from the commission?
I I would suggest that that number on on, it's, I guess, page three. Um if you go to page four, it talks about the property tax required, and that also shows somewhat of an increase for those years, but it's considerably less than the number on page three because that page three number includes all of the enterprise funds.
That's correct. And as you recall, we're adding our water treatment plant and we'll be adding our wastewater treatment plant right about that time. That debt service will be be kicking in for those two.
And I guess my question on the, on page four is that current property tax projection, does that include applying any fund balances we might be carrying? Because I know that was a little bit higher than anticipated. So that should work to moderate that number to some degree?
It does not include using that number at all. So you were correct.
So in in theory, anyway, that number might be moderated by by allowing that fund balance to move down towards target instead of levying additional taxes. Okay, thank you.
And and I, you know, the part of the reason we provided this information is to have this conversation. It doesn't necessarily impact this bond issuance. In fact, and these commitments are made, but it does make the point that we've got some debt management to to do between now and twenty-twenty-three in particular and.
And I would all, will also like to say this isn't a surprise. This has been a part of the capital improvements program and the debt projections related to that for some time. Uh you know, it's it's very difficult to organize these projects in a way to maintain a perfect. You know, it's very difficult to organize these projects in a way to maintain a perfectly smooth line. It just doesn't work that way. And so there are ups and downs to be considered.
And one of the reasons we wanted to provide the kind of list of projects that we're financing at the time is so that you can see that there are some large projects in there that we have done in the recent years that, you know, we may not have those coming back. We may have others as we think forward. But just to kind of see where those dollars kind of lie for those specific types of projects that we've been issuing debt for.
And one of the things we did was we moved the police training facility to property tax out of that sales tax too, which bumps this about four hundred thousand.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And even so, the debt service millage continues to hang between six and seven mills over the, you know, the past ten years.
And I do have Dave Artterberry on the phone. I don't know if he wanted to make any comments or not.
Mr. Artterberry, did you want to make any comments or are we good?
No, I think the only thing that I would like to add, if it's all right, is that we do have a call scheduled with Moody's Investors Service for next week to review the city's rating. And we're going to have on Wednesday a sort of a prep call just to prepare us for the following week's discussion. But other than that, that was really all I just wanted to add.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Hoppick here. I just had a quick question. Are we, are we starting to see a little uptick in the rates that we expect those bonds to come in at or?
Yeah, that's, that is a good question. Interest rates from about August of 2020 until the middle of February this year were at historic lows. They were just incredibly low rates. In about the middle of February and lasting until right about the end of February, municipal bond rates jumped up. They jumped up about four tenths of a percentage point or so. So they're still, if you look at from a historical perspective, still very low. They just weren't, aren't as low now as they were back, you know, in August through February. Since the end of February, the rates have actually come down a little bit. Right now, they're probably about three tenths of a percent above those February, early February lows. So bump up a little bit, but still on a historical basis, very, very low.
Any other questions for Mr. Artterberry or Ms. Pack? We'll open it up for any public questions or comments.
There are none in the room, Mayor Hodges.
Imagine that. Nobody wants to talk about bonds. All right. Well, then I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action. And we do have, as Ms. Pack mentioned, we have the three separate action items.
This is Commissioner Hoppick. Mayor Hodges, I move we approve resolution number two one dash seven nine four one, authorize the offering for public sale of general obligation temporary notes and bonds.
Commissioner France, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty-one dash seven nine four one, authorizing for public sale of general obligation temporary notes and bonds. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes five zero, which brings us to ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero five five.
Commissioner France, I would move that we adopt on first reading ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero five five, authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds to fund the police training facility, Tony's Pizza's Event Center basketball floors, Stone Lake Two, Pheasant Ridge Three, Phase Two, and Nine South projects.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt on first reading ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero five five. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Mr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes five zero. And then on the financial advisory services.
Commissioner Ryan, mayor, I move we authorize the city manager to sign the financial advisory services agreement with Stiefel Nichols and Company.
Commissioner Davis, second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to sign the financial advisory services agreement with Stiefel Nichols and Company. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes five zero. There is no development business. Is there anything that the commission would like to bring up under other business? I have one small item myself, but we'll proceed with the other members of the governing body. Okay. I just wanted, in light of our conversation, I think, last week and the week before, I just wanted to reassure you that we are moving forward to get some strategic planning of some sort done as soon as it can, as we can respond to that. I went back and reviewed Commissioner Francis's earlier suggestions in regard to our process and have spoken with him and with city manager Mike Skreg. And I think that when you take a look at the things like the American Rescue Plan funds, our parks priority and deferred maintenance list, all the infrastructure that we've got coming up, obviously, we're going to need to have some pretty deep discussions about how our future budgets reflect our priorities. So I'll keep you posted on that, but I did want you to know that we are working on that going forward. And that's all I have. So if nobody else has anything, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, move we adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We will see you here next week.